I'd like to call the October meeting of the Kansas Board of Education to order. And as we begin, I would like to welcome Dr. Mary Skaggs from Baker University and seven of her students. We always appreciate her bringing students here so that we can meet them and they can see a little bit about what we do. And also, I think Jim Porter's in the audience here somewhere. We're glad he's here to observe as well, since he will be joining this group in January. So, you want to wave so people know who you are? Okay. Thank you. I believe we are all present today with the exception of John Bacon. So there are nine members present. And we will begin our meeting with the reading of our mission statement. The mission of the State Board of Education is to prepare Kansas students for lifelong success through rigorous quality academic instruction, career training, and character development according to each student's gifts and talents. And I would invite you to observe a moment of silence with me. Will you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our first order of business is to approve the agenda for today. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Sally Cobble, seconded by Deana Horst. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, that's a 9-0 to approve the agenda. Next, we have the approval of the September minutes, and I believe there was an addition to those minutes. So I will ask Peggy Hill to read the addition.
Yes, for the consent item on the Safe and Supportive Schools grantees, that extension, the line was missing that should include the total of what KSD has budgeted. It was 864,940 to continue those previously approved contracts, so I will be adding that line in the consent.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes with that addition? Moved by Ken Willard, seconded by Jim McNeese. All in favor, raise your right hand. And that's a 9-0 vote as well. Next, we have our Commissioner's report, so we'll turn it over to Brad Newenswander.
Thank you. To start out the Commissioner's report, I'd like to introduce Mr. Dale Dennis, as he's going to introduce one of our new directors on the team.
Hey, it's exciting to be here today to introduce to you Mr. Bill Shaver. Bill's our new Director of Fiscal Services, the new Ethan. And within a couple of weeks, he got four kids, they all took after their mother very bright. And he can't say a word. How do you get him? But anyway, he's K-State and Baker graduate, and we're very pleased he's here. He also, he taught about, what, eight, nine years at the juvenile detention facility. Taught math out there. Don't hold that against him, please. Taught math out there. And also, he spent a couple of years on a professional baseball contract with Atlanta Braves, back a little earlier in his career. And we're pleased he's here. We're off and rolling. Who told him? But anyway, Bill Shaver, did you see him in the hallway? Holler at him. Bill, any words you wish to?
No, not this time. I'm rooting for the Royals. I'm definitely rooting for that book I worked on tonight.
Ask him yesterday if he thought he could send a little relief, but he decided, can't say Royals, don't need relief pitchers, they already got them. Anyway, but thanks for the opportunity to introduce Bill, and he's a great addition to our staff. Thank you very much.
Yes, we're excited to have him on staff. For the Commissioner's report, I only had one item, and I passed out a document to you this morning. Hopefully, you found it in front of you. I'm not going to read through all of this, but I just wanted to give you a quarterly update on where the agency is in trying to fulfill your goals and objectives. When you look through here, what we try to do, under each goal and objective, we try to just give you an update each quarter about what's happened. And so what you'll see in here in green, these are initiatives and activities that's happened since May, which I believe the last time you received an update was in April, and that was Diane's last meeting. I'm not going to go through each one of these, but what I did want to do is just hit some highlights for you, because it's been busy since May. In the realm of MTSS, we're really hitting hard, working with preschool programs as they're trying to implement the framework of MTSS. We had our seventh annual MTSS symposium. A few of you, those here, attended, and we had over 1,200 Kansans educators attend that, which I think is just, it just grows each year. Probably the biggest thing, though, is four years ago, we contracted as an agency in the Board with WestEd to do a four-year extensive evaluation of the effects of MTSS. As a state, we're now in about our eighth year of implementing MTSS. That report should be finalized and provided to the Board, hopefully by the December meeting. So it'll be nice to be able to finally look at the effects of this initiative. When you get to the Career Tech Ed section, there's been a lot take place in our career pathways and our clusters. I'm not going to speak to each one of these, but you'll see throughout that section, really starting on page five, all the work that's taken place under Career Tech Ed. And a lot of it has really helped with the passing of Senate Bill 155, which I think was very positive for our schools. So just wanted to draw your attention to everything in Career Tech Ed. Also, through the Career Tech Ed, last January or February, this Board passed a motion that we didn't mandate, but you strongly encouraged that every student, starting at the grade eight, should have an individual plan of study. So through our Career Tech Ed team, they are bringing together, they've already selected and have some dates set, where we're bringing middle school and high school principals together to start the workaround. We know a lot of school districts already have really good models and plans, so we're bringing a bunch of them across the state together to really look at all the different unique and innovative ways that school districts are doing individual plans of study. That way, we can get that information out to all other schools of different options and unique approaches. So that group is being led by Jay Scott, so we'll keep you updated on how that goes. So that team of principals has been selected. We had our Summer Academies again this summer. That was very successful around helping school districts transitioning to all of our standards, content standards. We are going to take a unique approach next year to where during those Summer Academies, we're going to start looking at other initiatives that we want to bring people in across the state. Outside of just transitioning to new standards, how we can provide supports to the state around teacher leader evaluations and a whole host of other topics to build on our Summer Obviously, with the Board's goal, number two, to provide an effective educator in every classroom, starting on page 12 of this, you'll see a lot of initiatives and decisions the Board's made throughout the summer and into this fall around providing an effective educator in every classroom, specifically with your license year regulation changes. So if you look at there, you'll see a lot of ways that this Board, over the, starting last spring and throughout the summer, including the options for special ed as an initial teacher prep program, increasing the flexibility of out-of-state applicants, the STEM license year options, creating the Career Tech Ed specialized certificate. So you'll see more detail with the Board approving those regulations, how they're now starting to roll out. We also, on page 14, you'll start seeing what we call the Kansas Professional Learning Team. We started this summer. We brought in 24 educators from around the state, including all of our service centers, to build this team to do a better job of providing tools and instructional supports to school districts, because we are very limited on staff, trying to get out across the state. So we're bringing, we created this team to come in. We have our, another meeting coming up here later this month, where we bring professionals in across the state. We spend two days going through all the initiatives, creating good presentation and documents and resources for them to get out across the state. So that's coming off to a good start. As far as teacher leader evaluations, this is the second year. All 286 school districts now have quality-approved evaluation instruments. They piloted them last year. This year, they're in place. Our focus now is how we will eventually use student growth in those evaluations. There's a lot, starting on page 17, just around promotion and encouraging best practices with early childhood education. When you have time, look through those. Our early childhood team has been extremely busy since May, June, around the state, working with not only school districts but parent organizations, as well as other agencies, the Children's Cabinet, really trying to coordinate our efforts on early childhood. The last part is really on the back page, where we're trying to, as an agency, work with other agencies, including bringing together the Pre-K through 16 Task Force, we're calling it. We have a team selected of early childhood. We've got some superintendents, principals, one of our former Kansas Teacher of the Year members, some higher ed to come together to start talking about that Pre-K through 16 goal. What are we all, what can we all decide is one of our ultimate objectives, to really, hopefully, change the conversation about, it's not just about one test, even though that's important, but there's a lot of other measures that tell whether or not we're successful around college and career-ready. So we're bringing that group together. I think our first meeting is scheduled in November, so we're moving forward with that. Other than that, again, I don't want to read through all of this, just to give you an update. You can look through some of your goals, your objectives, and just see some of the activities. This is not all-inclusive. There's a lot of other things going on that may not have gotten on the list, but if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer any for you.
Brad, I was just looking at the very last item on page 22, and it talks about grant, Safe and Supportive Schools grant, and it paying for intervention services. Would those be services just relating to drug-free schools, or what type of interventions are we talking about?
Mostly with the Safe and Supportive Schools grant, it is interventions around, it's not just, it's bullying, it's substance abuse, it's, there's a whole list of interventions that fall in underneath that. The main thing on that grant was it was to expire, and we got permission from the U.S. Department of Ed to continue it, so, and that was the agenda item, the minutes, that we wanted to keep those initiatives forward. But the interventions, I could get you a list of all the types of interventions, but there's a host of interventions that we work with, you know, different associations and school districts to support. But I can get you a list of...
Well, I was just curious how narrowly those were defined, so it sounds like it's a fairly broad range.
It is.
Kathy Bush.
There we go. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Brad, for the, for the information. Under the Summer Academies, I'm kind of assuming that you will start including the Rose capacities as far as some of that work that you'll be doing, as far as we figure out how to implement that and all of our work.
Yeah, the, when, when you talk about the Rose capacities, what we try to continue to refer educators to is the State Board's definition of college and career-ready, that we think aligns perfectly to the, to the Rose capacities. So yes, we're, that's been a lot of our work, to try and really draw that. Even though the Rose standards only mention academic in two of the seven, the State Board's definition emphasizes the academic, but also the cognitive, the technical, and the employability workforce skills. So that's been a lot of our, but you're right, that's just that shift where academic readiness is important, but we're looking beyond just that.
Yeah, I just think that's important for folks to understand, that we really are looking at those capacities, and it's a lot of how we do our work. So thank you.
Jim McNeese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brad, not at this time, not right now, but in the future, and maybe even in a Friday news report, I'd like to know more about what partnership and collaborative efforts we've, we've had in the past and maybe have in the future with the Children's Cabinet. Thank you.
Other questions? Well, thank you. Oh, Deana Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since there are a number of new task forces that you are putting together, I don't know about the rest of my colleagues, but I would appreciate knowing who's, who's serving and where they're from, et cetera, and who they represent.
Absolutely. I can get those from the Professional Learning Team to the Task Force to, we have quite a few people we bring in across the state, so I'll, I'll pull those together and...
And maybe they're online. I don't, if they are, we could just, you could just reference us...
I'll do that.
...to that location, but...
Will do. Another one, for example, is the Closing the Achievement Gap Task Force. That's been in existence. I'll, I'll get you a list of all those.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Other questions? Well, thank you, Brad. I was just thinking about this and looking at all the work and effort that go into implementing the goals of the Board, and want to thank you and the Department for, for all of that effort to do the things that need to be done to see that these are successful, so appreciate Our next item of business is to act on recommendations of the Professional Practices Commission. I believe Kalen Kendall's with us today.
Of your packet, you have the recommendation of the Professional Practices Commission. This time around, there's only one case before you, so I'm ready to answer any questions that you might have related to that case.
Are there questions for Kalen regarding this item?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you just summarize, it was a five-to-one vote for approval, was it not?
Correct.
Could you, and I apologize for not knowing everything I need to know this morning, could you summarize briefly the concerns of the one?
The, what it comes down to is the one dissenting vote simply disagreed with the overall conclusion of the five other members. I wouldn't at this time be able to speak specifically to what his concerns were, but in, in general, he simply did not agree that Mr. McKenzie is fit to be licensed as an educator
Deana Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Was there, did Mr. McKenzie come to testify?
Yes.
And did he show some rehabilitation...
Yes.
...efforts, and is that documented?
Yeah, the, the initial orders that you have, starting on page 25 and running through page 34, they list specifically the findings of fact, which include Mr. McKenzie's background, which primarily centered around alcohol abuse, and there, he had a felony DUI conviction in the past, as well as a theft conviction. And the conclusion of the commission was essentially that Mr. McKenzie had suffered from years of alcohol abuse, but had, in recent years, completely turned his life around, and the commission found that he was rehabilitated and continues to attend AA, and that was a significant finding. As, as part of the overall findings, there were, there was expert testimony from two witnesses, one on behalf of the, of the Department, and another one on Mr. McKenzie's behalf. And all of the, the testimony of both of those expert witnesses, as well as some other witnesses, were taken into consideration, as well as Mr. McKenzie's own testimony.
Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you. I noticed when I was reading all of this transcript, there was a one doctor that they did not find his testimony persuasive. Now, did he come in support of the applicant?
That was Dr. Payne, who was hired by the Department.
By, by, and while ago you said the Department, what department are you talking about?
Department of Education.
Okay. 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 I do believe in rehabilitation, though. Thank you. And my other thought was, I know from past, and I saw where they cited the Wright case in here, that he was not a licensed educator at the time of all this, was he not?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Then do I hear a motion that we adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of the Professional Practices Commission and approve their recommendations? Moved by Carolyn Campbell. Is there a second? Seconded by Steve Roberts. Is there any other discussion? I would like to say that I will need to recuse myself from this vote. So all in favor, raise your right hand. So we have an eight.
I think it's...
Well, your, your hands were all up. It's a unanimous vote, so 8-0. Well, we're a little bit early, but I believe we'll go ahead with our Citizens Open Forum. We have several speakers. I now declare the Citizens Open Forum of the Kansas State Board of Education meeting open at 10:25 a.m. The State Board provides this opportunity for citizens to share views about topics of interest or issues currently being considered by the State Board. The State Board asks that speakers identify themselves by name, the name of the group they represent, if applicable. We also ask that each speaker focus their remarks on issues or topics. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. Any Board questions will be for clarification. Our first speakers are Scott Rothschild and Ted Carter, and they will be followed by
Thank you, Chair Shaver, and members of the State Board. My name is Scott Rothschild. You may have known me in an earlier incarnation as a reporter for the Lawrence Journal world. Now I'm representing the Kansas Association of School Boards in the communications and advocacy. And the reason I'm here today is to, we are releasing some research publicly that we feel is very important, and it deals with two really non-controversial subjects, student outcomes and funding. And it's, it's a deep dive that we really feel hits on a lot of, a lot of key topics. And with me, basically, this research shows that school spending is a strong predictor of achievement, and it also shows that Kansas is an overachiever in this respect. We do more with the money that we receive than just about every state. And those are kind of broad conclusions, and the man who can provide the real guts of this research is here, Ted Carter. So we have handed this out, and we urge you to share it with your constituents, and if you have any questions about the actual research and the really cool graphs inside, please, please ask Ted.
Are there, I know we've just been handed this and haven't really had time to digest it. Are there any questions at this point?
Does Ted have anything?
Ted, were you going to...
Say anything, Ted?
...enlighten us?
You know, it's, there's always a danger of going way too far into the weeds on that one, so I don't think there's anything to add, other than please let us know if you've got questions.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for bringing this to us.
Thank you for hearing him.
I didn't say anything.
Thank you, and if we have questions, we'll get in touch with you.
Thank you very much.
And we have Dr. John Morton, followed by Rosie Schmidt.
Madam Chair, I defer, I'm expecting a guest that I want to introduce to the board.
Okay. Well, we'll go ahead then, if, with your permission, because we do like to take you in order. Okay, so we have Rosie Schmidt.
Members of the Board, thanks for your time this morning. Jim, it's nice to see you, we met in Wichita. I am firmly opposed to the new APUSH U.S. history standards. I drove from Wichita today in order to speak to you. I, like most moms, have a lot on my plate, including the need to paint the west side of my house before the snow flies, but all that's going to have to wait, because someone is messing with my kids. Someone is trying to deny my children the ability to learn the real history of their country, the history of valor, of love of country, of American exceptionalism. How distorted is this new AP U.S. history framework? Here are some facts discovered by Ken Mercer, member of the Texas State Board of Education. These facts were verified by Larry Krieger, retired teacher and author, recognized by the Board, the College Board itself, as one of the best AP teachers in '04 and '05, and Jane Robbins, Senior Fellow at the American Principals Project. In the period of the American Revolution up to the 1787 Constitutional Convention, almost every founding father is omitted. No Jefferson, no Adams, no Madison, no Franklin. The framework excludes Lexington, Concord, Bunker Hill, Valley Forge, Saratoga, and Yorktown. The commanders and heroes of the pivotal battles are all omitted. The lessons of the Civil War omit the Lincoln-Douglas debates, the Gettysburg Address, the assassination of President Lincoln. The framework once again omits crucial battles, key commanders, and the valor of common soldiers. The lessons on World War II omit the greatest generation, Truman, Hitler, D-Day, Midway, the Battle of the Bulge, and I have an uncle who was in the Battle of the Bulge. And it seems like a darn shame that they're not going to teach my children about their uncle, their grandfather, and the sacrifices they made for our freedoms. Shamefully, the Nazi atrocities against Jews and other groups are, quote, "not required", unquote. The College Board concludes this treatment of World War II with this blunt statement, quote, "The decision to drop the atomic bomb raised questions about American values", unquote. The lessons on the Civil Rights Movement do not mention Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Cesar Chavez, Rosa Parks, the Navajo code talkers, Tuskegee, Ariman, and Barbara Jordan's famous speech on the Constitution. All these are omitted. The unelected College Board is rewriting history and promoting a disdain for America and a lack of knowledge of major American achievements. An open letter from APUSH authors acknowledges that the framework omits Ben Franklin, Eisenhower, and Martin Luther King and other key figures, but it accuses the critics of misunderstanding the document. We understand fully the wording of the document, and the document's very clear. It states that, that after May 15th of this year, quote, "No U.S. history exam questions will require students to know the historical content that falls outside of those concept guidelines, outlines." Thank you.
Janet Wall, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to ask a question of Brad, though, before, I just sort of want to know, do we approve AP? We do not approve, that's what I thought.
It's in our schools, and our school kids will be taking it.
That, that's a local decision, not all schools offer AP courses, and each district decides whether to do that, so.
What's the Board's opinion on schools using, since they look to your opinion and your advice on you?
Well, you know, we have our own history and, and social studies standards, we have Kansas standards. Most schools, if they don't offer AP, and not all students take AP, it's just a handful of the.
Want to get into college.
Most gifted students. Well, my grandson just completed that course, too, in Independence, but he felt like it gave him a wonderful understanding of the issues and the events that influenced the course of history, so I think each student, you know, has maybe a different thought about that, but we do.
Did he take the new AP?
Excuse me?
Did he take the new AP?
Yes.
Assessment?
But anyway, we do appreciate your comments. I think Janet's point was that this Board does not approve or regulate the AP standards, those are national effort. Am I correct?
That'd be the College Board.
Yeah, so.
Or the Board of Legits, that would be the place to go. Do you think it would be a wise thing for this group to develop an opinion one way or the other, you know, to advise or not advise teachers and students and parents? Because, you know, and when parents know what's in the new standards as, like Common Core, they're not happy, but parents are busy, and, you know, we look to people we elect to work with us, to inform us, we inform you and others, but I'd like to see.
You might want to discuss that with your local Board. I think that would be the place to start, but thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you for listening. Like to see you guys have a formal.
Ken, Sally.
Opinion.
Ken Willard had a comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Question, I guess.
With all due respect, I think that these concerns are very legitimate that have been brought to us, and I am not comfortable with just saying, "Talk to someone else, talk to your local Board." Fact of the matter is, we are responsible for the standards to which our students are held in, in all curriculum areas. True, we don't govern the AP standards or their curriculum, but we need to be concerned about it, and, and I think that she, this, Mrs. Schmidt has brought us a very legitimate concern, and we ought to ensure that our standards are not polluted by this kind of revisionist history. And I would, I would want to know, and without, I'd like to hear from the Department, without having to personally research every page of it, to know whether or not these standards are in any way being reflected in our standards as we go forward. So, I would like to thank Ms. Schmidt for bringing this forward to us, and I think your concerns are legitimate, and we need to do our best job, the best job that we can, to ensure that our students are not being misled by this kind of revisionist history. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This gentleman here, Ken Mercer, is a great person to start with, he's been an AP history teacher for 20 years, and he said he didn't recognize them, and I didn't have time in my work to list all the seminal documents that are not included.
Thank you.
They flower compacted.
Thank you.
Sally Cobble.
Thank you. Rosie, I got a question. I've received an email today from somebody, and they said they don't like the APUSH. Is this the same thing?
It is.
So, so my, it's the first time I've heard about it, okay? And so, that email is the same thing that you're talking about?
Yes, it's an acronym for AP U.S. history.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, it's the first time I'm hearing about it. I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. You need to know that I'm, I'm a great person on, I like dual enrollment instead of AP enrollment, but I, too, would like our Commissioner to, I'd like to know who, who approves AP requirements, and I would, I'm like Ken, I would like to make sure that, and we, we approved new standards for history and social studies and government a year ago, and I'd like to make sure that we didn't make some mistakes.
Okay.
On that, and see that alignment. I, I appreciate, but I would, in the meantime, I would encourage you to check with your local school board, to make sure they understand, they may be like we are, caught off guard, and.
It's our job.
Yeah.
I have a lot of things I'm neglecting at home, but it's like.
Yeah.
This is important, it's going to have to wait, so I appreciate you guys.
Now, the first time I heard about it was a lady from Colorado on the State School Board approving something like this, and I thought maybe she'd lost her mind, but if this is going to be a, a national push or something that you're bringing to us, I think that, I don't want it happening in Kansas.
Good, thank you very much.
Carolyn Campbell.
I want to thank you, Ms. Schmidt, for, for bringing this to us, because it started upsetting to me. My daughter graduated in, from high school in 1990, and I remember her doing homework, and I've been frustrated with the curriculum that our schools have, a lot of times upon history, because there would be so much lacking, and I'm concerned now that we approved histories, we had all that reviewed and reviewed it, was it just last year or the year before? But, but what happened then was, when they were reviewing it, the committee and Mr. Gifford, I'm, I'm hoping Mr. Don Gifford here is listening, so many things that should have been as a guideline for our, our districts was not even there, and they added some, but, and I told them at the time that I was not happy totally with what was being given for our, the foundation for our children, so I'm thankful you brought this, because I think it is, even if we don't have control over this, it is important for us to take a stand and to make sure that the Navajo code, code talkers, that's something, and just recently something, I was somewhere and someone had no clue what that was all about.
Oh, that's a shame.
And everybody should know that, but I was not taught that when I was in high school, which was a long time ago, but.
Well.
Do you young people know about, oh, see, now, they do, see, so it's, it's better now, but there's just so much that we're not, the foundation, we're not getting, having our young people have the appreciation of our history, and I don't like a lot of these people, they write these books that are lacking information.
Of the heroism and the greatness of our country.
Don't get me started on history, but, but thank you so much.
No matter how far we go down the wrong road, we can always turn around.
So, I thank you, too.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. John Morton, followed by Sarah Loquist.
Thank you for your forbearance. My, my special guest that I want to introduce had a little trouble finding her building, because he's not been here before, but I'll, I'll introduce him in a moment. I wanted to alert the Board to a couple of things. First of all, thanks to those of you who have signed up for our conference, Common Sense About the Common Core, which will be October 30th, we're excited about that, and hopefully we'll provide some common sense about the Common Core on that day. Also, I want to remind you that this Friday, Dr. Diane DeBecker will be honored as an ESU Distinguished Alumni recipient, she's one of four to receive the award this year, and she'll be making a presentation at ESU at 10 o'clock on Friday morning. We're excited to have her back on campus and, and making that presentation. I think you have flyers about the conference in your, in your packet as well. I will also, wanted you to be aware that I will also be the Liaison for USA, beginning with this Board meeting, I've been asked to also provide that link with the USA and the Board, and shared my, my notes with the, the USA office as well, so that will be happening. It's a pleasure for me this morning to introduce a longtime colleague and friend, who has just recently become the Department Chair of the School Leadership Department, Middle and Secondary Teacher Education Department at Emporia State. Dr. Dan Stifler was a, an educator in the Wichita Public Schools, also in the Hayesville Public Schools, and most recently was Superintendent of the Bueller School District. We're delighted to have his expertise come to our staff, and I want to introduce him to you this morning and give him a chance to, to say a few words to you. Dr. Stifler.
Thank you, Dr. Morton, I appreciate that. I apologize for my tardiness this morning, but I do appreciate the opportunity to just briefly speak to you. I've been very fortunate, as, as Dr. Morton mentioned, to serve in some wonderful school districts, besides some, some terrific people, some of which are seated at, at this, at this table, both urban districts and rural districts as well, and, and those in between. But certainly, it's an honor for me to be a part of the history and the tradition of Emporia State University now, and I'm extremely excited about that, and the, the people that I get to work with at Emporia State. I'll mention quickly that our graduate programs and, and school leadership currently have over 700 students in our graduate programs. Those programs include educational administration, they include district and, and building licensure, curriculum instruction, alternate route, masters in teaching. We have wonderful K-12 educators that bring that, that practice and that experience to, to the experience in their teaching in our faculty, and, and we're constantly looking for ways to improve and be, be the best that we can. We look forward to opportunities to, to partner with the Board and to pursue like interests in any way we possibly can, and again, I thank you for the opportunity to, to speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have Sarah Loquist, followed by Lisa Huers, Huers?
Good morning, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. I'm Sarah Loquist, I'm an attorney with the Kansas Association of School Boards, and I wanted to speak with you regarding the latest proposed revision to the ESI regulations. I'm passing out, or it's coming down the line to you, written comments, I won't have time to cover all of that in my brief time with you this morning. We have multiple concerns with this latest revision, including some citation errors that would need to be corrected, but I want to focus on the three biggest concerns that I have with this latest revision. The first being, there are three alternatives that a hearing officer from the State Department of Education could decide on this administrative review of an ESI complaint. The first being determining whether the local Board appropriately resolved the complaint pursuant to its local dispute resolution process. Second, the hearing officer determines whether the local Board should reevaluate the complaint pursuant to the local dispute resolution process with suggested findings of fact. Or three, the hearing officer determines whether the local Board should comply with the hearing officer's recommended corrective action to ensure local Board policies comply with the regulations. Of those three, I feel the third one is really the only one that would be constitutional. I have attached to this testimony that I gave before the Special Education Advisory Council regarding the last two proposed revisions to the ESI regulations, and talked about the differences in the constitutional obligations of the State Board versus the local Boards of Education. And my concern is that the first two options for this hearing officer would allow them to essentially overrule the decision of a local Board of Education, and that was not within your constitutional purview. Second, one of the basis for filing for administrative review is an allegation that the school district did not train personnel in accordance with the regulations. If you go back and look at your regulations on the training, there are no criteria there as to what must be provided to whom, and in, in trainings, your staff of the, of the Department of Education has indicated that that really is up to the local boards as to who they want to train and how much they want them to be trained, and they've indicated there's only three areas everyone has to be trained in, positive behavior supports, de-escalation techniques, and prevention techniques. And. And finally, the proposed revisions do not limit this administrative review to issues raised in the complaint that was filed with the local board of education, and so it only limits the types of issues that could be brought up. And thank you very much for your time. If you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer those for you.
Thank you. Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you. Did you have more that you needed to say, or were you?
I think I spit it out as fast as I could. But I would ask that you go ahead and review my written comments. There are some additional concerns that I had set forth in there.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Next is Lisa, followed by Teri Collins.
Members of the board, I and a growing number of Kansas citizens are concerned about the College Board's redesigned APUSH framework. This is based on the fact that the framework document defines what the end-of-course exams will include, and therefore what teachers must cover and students must learn in order to be successful. The new framework replaced the previous and long-used five-page topic outline with this detailed and growing 142-page document that defines, discusses, and interprets what the College Board calls the required knowledge for each period. The College Board's required knowledge focuses on identity group grievances, conflict, exploitation, and examples of oppression. This only results in a negative view of American history. It is a dishonest view of American history. Accordingly, due to its extremely one-sided view, it can only be concluded that it is political and subjective in nature rather than fact-based. State boards of education don't appear to be necessary anymore. Why do states need boards of education at either the state or local level when college board tests usurp state curriculum standards by unilaterally decreeing what students should know? The only way to top, to a top score on the AP exam is to focus on the framework and not on material from state standards. The College Board can say states can teach what they want, and thank you, College Board, for permission to do so, but a significant point of the class is to pass an exam at the end of it. Therefore, why would teachers focus on material not relevant to passing an exam? And considering the growing length of the framework document, there will be no room for state input. The new framework is not aligned with standards states have legally adopted as guidelines for history, U.S. history courses and exams. It is a new national curriculum overriding state standards. It cheats students out of understanding the richness of their nation's history, it lacks input or consent, and the College Board has also reduced the necessity of state boards of education. We the people request the State Board of Education not correct the historical record, but rather mandate the dissemination of the correct historical record. We the people demand a full representation of America's core values, key leaders, and seminal documents. We the people expect documented quotes from primary sources, ordered arguments, and the words of the actual participants in history themselves. We the people reject spoon-fed ideology and author-injected unscholarly judgment as substitutes for actually digging out and reconstructing what really happened in world history and why. We the people will only accept unrushed scholarly accuracy. We the people demand to be respected as capable, thinking human beings relied upon to weigh the best evidence and draw our own conclusions. Who knows? Reading first-person eyewitness citations from actual historical records yourself may jolt a few preconceived impressions and our grade-school-learned stereotypes. We the people call upon the Kansas State Board of Education to request that the College Board rewrite its redesigned Advanced Placement History course and exam to reflect state standards and respecting state sovereignty. Thank you.
Sally Cobble has a question.
It's not of you, though. It's of Kathy and of Brad. I wonder if, when we go to our ESU, Kathy, I wonder if when we go to our next council meeting with the K-Board, if we could ask them about this issue, that it might be an item. And I know that's a little out of order, Jenna, but I was afraid if I didn't ask it now, I'd forget. Thank you very much for bringing it to our attention.
Deana Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I guess my question has perhaps a similar, a similar point, but I, too, have concerns about what you're revealing to us. Think it's very important that our children learn what the history of this country has been, and we shouldn't be leaving out what has gone on because it upsets a certain group of people. It seems to me that perhaps the question is, can we, as a board, keep a school district from offering AP at their school district? And if not, at least, I think, if in our research we discover that what your research has shown is absolutely correct, that it would be wise of us to inform those, every school district of what really is in those, in those history standards that AP is pushing, and we at least let the school districts have that bit of knowledge, so they're not kind of innocently assuming that everything is being taught when indeed it isn't. But it also, it also is a state, a local board decision, and I would assume, I'm surprised that, that colleges and universities would accept that, that kind of information being taught to kids as being up to snuff, so to speak, so that they could get college credit. So that, I've got a number of questions surrounding this issue, and I don't think we're going to resolve them here today, but I do appreciate you bringing this to our attention.
One of the items on the agenda today at 4 o'clock is to, item K under 17, is to act, act to continue contract with the College Board to provide advanced placement exam fees. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's okay. Thank you. And listening to Deana and then when Sally, I know I'm out of line, but I really, and I understand how we set agendas, but I really would like to have a brief presentation next month on this, instead of letting it sort of drag out till we can go to K-Board, you know, all these other things. But I would really like to hear from the department and, you know, Mr. Gifford, and then, because I had no idea until this morning, so.
I do think we need some clarification on this issue, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Teri Collins is next, followed by Kirk Fast.
Well, thank you again for the opportunity to come here today. It's always a pleasure. I am Teri Collins. I am here to represent the Kansas Association of Special Ed Administrators regarding the appeal process to the Emergency Safety Intervention Regulations. Now, I didn't get to stay last time for the afternoon session, but I did go back to the archives, and I did look at that, and I think that I may have inadvertently given you the impression that the Kansas Association of Special Administrators is against appeal processes in general and against supervision and things like that. I want to assure you that that is not the case, that Casey appreciates the technical assistance from the Kansas State Department of Education in lots of different areas, and ESI would be no different. We do take lots of information from them now in the development of the policies, procedures, and the training. But what I wanted to point out was that from Casey's perspective, what you were asking for was an additional appeal process, that there is an appeal process built within the regulations, and that is the conflict resolution with the local boards. So I just want to clear that up. What our perspective was, was we saw this as an additional appeal, not just wanting to not be supervised and not have that kind of information. The other issue that I had talked about to you had to deal with gathering information about the data of the parents that are complaining. We have been working with families together, and they, I've communicated with them, and as of today, they received, since August 11, they have had four parental calls regarding emergency safety interventions. And of those, it was three or four was that people wanted to have information. They are working hard with the parents and other organizations and schools to resolve those concerns that those parents had. One of them was a parent wanted ESI to occur to, in order to prevent self-injurious behavior. That becomes a very difficult process. Something's got to be done. But anyway, the point is, is that Families Together does not recommend that a parent complain to the board to go through this process if they can possibly resolve that at the lowest level, and that's what they're attempting to do. To date, they have not recommended that any parent go through the board. They have not received any concerns from parents that did talk to their local boards about ESI. Okay. So all that being said, what I'd like to do is point you to the end, and if indeed an appeals process is necessary, we believe that the CAC recommendations are very good ones, and that if those constitutional, if those constitutional discussions that Sarah was talking about are resolved, we believe that the process put together by Scott Gordon is a good one and does incorporate CAC's recommendations to you, and the Kansas Association of Special Administrators would support that policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Steve Roberts has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So do you officially take a position on the 60 days that's part of that proposed amendment?
No, I don't think we take a stand on that. I believe we would leave that up to the legal department of KSDE, and we'll comply with whatever they direct us to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Next, we have Kirk Fast, followed by Rocky Nichols.
Hi, I'm Kirk Fast, here representing myself and, well, one recent high school graduate and one left to go. And as an aside, I, boy, did take AP history. I don't know if these things were in place a couple of years ago, but certainly it was a great asset in his preparation, although I share the concerns I heard. I was last here, a couple of months ago, I wasn't able to make it last month, but when I was here on October, or in August, I was a little bit bothered, and I certainly hope that the board, if it hasn't already, will start looking at establishing some guidelines regarding board members coming up here in this citizens forum to address the board. That seems ethically quite wrong and certainly morally questionable for that kind of behavior to be taking place. It would seem that you all have your own voice. After all, there are 10 of you, then presumably all 10 of you could come up as well as the commissioner, the attorney. We're then taking a lot of time away from citizens such as myself, such as the other people in this room, such as the students sitting here, and rather having the potential to override their concerns. After all, you are elected to represent the constituencies within your district, and if there is no one within your district who's willing to come up and voice the concerns that you express, well, then perhaps that's personalizing it a bit too much. There was also during that same thing, that same August meeting, a comment about, and I really didn't understand where it was headed, but to stop labeling by race as a future, issue to be futurably addressed. Again, there wasn't anything much more than a comment made in that regard. However, whatever information we can get regarding groups, subgroups, SES, and all like that, as far as it affects school performance, this is information, you know, most likely of a statistical rather than anecdotal sort of nature. I don't support anecdotal evidence really to any degree whatsoever. But as far as gaining broad-range statistical evidence regarding folks, whether it's their ethnicity, their gender, socioeconomic statuses that relates to their performance in schools, I think that's wholly appropriate and should be actively sought by everyone on this board in order to come to the best decisions and conclusions as to how you all go forward. Just listening to what Mr. Neuswander was listing there at the beginning, that's a large host of concerns, and in order to address all those as effectively and appropriately as possible, you need all the information that pertains to each one of those. So ruling anything out, I don't think is ever really going to serve the best interest of the schools, the teachers, the students of Kansas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Rocky Nichols, followed by Catherine Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for your continued commitment to amend and fix these ESI regulations. Regarding KASB's constitutional question, we have had legislators contact our organization wanting to pass a bill on ESI. That would solve the constitutional question once and for all, because the legislature can clearly assign this board duties. I've attached to this memo, a, attached a memo cosigned by over 20 different organizations and advocates supporting what we're asking for. It reads like a who's who of disability rights, NAMI, Easter Seals Capra Foundation, Dr. Rory Miniger, and several others. Regarding the CAC recommendations, one thing you need to know is that CAC came within one vote of not recommending an appeals process go to KSDE. We want you to take that into account when you review the draft. I've also attached the seven principles in special education. These principles come from the excellent special ed textbook by former University of Kansas Professor Rod Turnbull. Dr. Turnbull is a world-renowned expert in special ed, helped draft the law, and testified to this board on the limit on the use of ESI. The keystone in this illustration, as you can see, is trust. If you take any of the other principles, which are the stones holding up the keystone, the archway collapses. As we read it, "The current KSDE draft, which you received, does not abide by these seven principles of special education. It treats the information provided by parents differently from schools in the dispute resolution process. It gives deference to schools," knocking out several stones in the archway, "including equality, respect, and communication." Again, the archway collapses, and it's a pile of rubble. The draft only requires district to have a policy instead of uniform standards. Obviously, the archway would not stand there. It does not fix the other known concerns with regulations as discussed by the board 20 months ago, like the need to use the U.S. Department of Education standard, written under the leadership of former Kansas Commissioner of Education Alexa Pozney, which limits the use of when. the use of when you can use ESI to when there's, quote, 'an immediate danger of causing serious physical harm to self-er others.'" Last month, you said you wanted a simple declarative and principled appeals process. We're attaching the eight components, and we heard you say with your exact words from last meeting. Having a complex process that's more akin to an appellate court process gives deference to schools, treats parents differently, is not simple, declarative, or principled. The General Counsel told you last month that it only requires a policy, and because of that, he stated, quote, "It does not say teachers are not allowed to use arm bars or throw students in a room for four hours." And that's the problem. This is a square peg, round hole type of problem. The issue is, because you only require a policy, because you don't have uniform standards that are effective and enforceable, you're always going to have this square peg. You have to amend the regulation, round out that square peg, to get it to fit into the round hole that you want, which is the round hole serving your goal of having a simple, declarative, and principled regulation. Thank you.
My name's Catherine Johnson. I'm attorney with the Display Rights Center of Kansas, and as always, it's a pleasure to be in front of you. I welcome the opportunity to give you some feedback on the proposed administrative review process that has been presented to you. Last month, we were here, and we heard very clearly the board request the appeal process include a very important issue, which is a parent's ability to file a complaint alleging that the district made the wrong decision on their initial complaint. The board asked for that to be included in the appeal process. Majority of the board requested that this process be simple, principled, and declarative. The regulation amendment that's been presented to you is the exact opposite. It contains complications and confusions, vague processes, and frustrations for a parent that is trying to file a complaint under that process. The first issue of concern I'd like to point out is that the ESI regulation does not include a uniform standard on when it is appropriate to use ESI. This is causing regulations to be problematic when KSDE goes to enforce them. We at the Disability Rights Center continue to believe that it's necessary to amend part of the ESI regulation to include a uniform standard, so it is clear that that is a directive that must be followed by all school districts. It is not a policy. This would change a parent's ability to file a complaint on use of ESI, and it would make it so that KSDE had the clear ability to enforce that regulation. Looking at the initial draft, the initial concerns are that it's exactly opposite of what the board asked for last month. First off, I'd point out a couple of things, that the draft appeal process requires the complaint to be typed. Does the board really wish to turn away written complaints? The draft also limits a parent's ability to file a complaint on a few identified concerns. It affords great deference to the local board. It is structured as if it's an appellate court, where a parent has an uphill battle to prevail on a complaint. This is not what we heard the board request. There are three opportunities for the hearing officer to make a decision on the complaint. All of these afford great deference to the local board. Essentially, the hearing officer remands the case back to the local board for a new decision. If a parent wants to submit new evidence, the new evidence goes back to the local board for a decision, presumably. It's unclear in the administrative process how that's to happen. So it leaves a parent in a bind. Do they seek to submit new evidence, wait for that to go back to the local board, then do they have to file a new complaint? It is very unclear and confusing to a parent. The Disability Rights Center continues to advocate for the draft that we developed with the formal General Counsel. We believe it meets all of the identified concerns of the board. Thank you very much. I'd stand for questions if there are any.
We would like to thank our speakers for sharing their views with the board. The State Board will determine if any of the issues should be addressed as an agenda item at a future meeting. And at this time, we will take a 10-minute break and resume at 11:25. Get with it. Well, I'll remind our board members that we have a one-day meeting this time, and we don't want to stay till nine o'clock, so maybe we ought to get back to the table. Okay, our next presentation regards the emergency safety intervention. We're going to get an update and recommended changes by Jana, and I have Joan Robbins.
And Laura Jurgensen.
And Laura, okay, thank you.
But first, absolutely, we're going to start, good morning, with an update from CAC, the Special Education Advisory Council. The chairperson, Dr. Joan Robbins, is going to provide an update on what was discussed at their last meeting and provide some recommendations on an appeal process. So with that, I will turn it over to Joan.
Hi, good morning. Thanks for letting me speak to you today. I thought it might be helpful for me to give you a sense of the discussion that took place at the Special Education Advisory Council, because it was just under, actually, three months ago that we learned that we were going to be asked for a recommendation for an appeal process. That was at our July meeting. It happened late in July. We realized at that point that we did not have another scheduled CAC meeting until September, and so we called for an additional meeting to our regular schedule of meetings solely to discuss the need for an appeal process to the regulations. So that meeting was held in August, and the only agenda item was ESI and the need for that appeal process, and should we make that recommendation. We had a very spirited discussion. There was a lively debate about whether or not the appeal process was, in fact, needed. And there were, I would say, pretty strong opinions on both sides of that matter. We had quite a few people come at the August meeting to make public comment. And as happened today, I noticed that you were given a lot of information, a lot of paper passed down the line. And because we take this matter so seriously and wanted to make a really good recommendation to the board, at the end of several hours of discussion and listening to our stakeholders come during the public comment session, we decided that we wanted to take an additional month to review the information that was provided to us and to reflect on what we had discussed at the August meeting. When we came back to our regularly scheduled meeting in September, again, we still had a good discussion, I thought. All the members really participated. And again, we had a lot of public comment, including Steve Roberts, who came and emphasized that he was not there as a state board representative, but as a private citizen. But it became clear through the discussion and a review of where the board was really, had really talked about it at your previous meeting, that there was going to be an appeal process going forward. And so, at that point, our discussion really turned a little bit to, well, if there is going to be an appeal process, it was important to CAC to have a voice in that. So we took a vote at that point to whether or not we should make the recommendation for an appeal process. And as Rocky pointed out, the vote was very close. It was eight to six. You know, that vote, I think, could have gone a different direction had we not already felt that you were going to move forward with an appeal process. But once that vote was taken, you know, to make the recommendation, all of us got together to really talk about what was critical to us and what was important to us to be included in the appeal process. The vote on our recommendations was unanimous. So I just want to clarify that. We were split pretty much on the need for an appeal process, but we were unanimous on our recommendations. So today, I want to tell you what the recommendations were then. We recommended that CAC, that the parties permitted to bring an appeal to the local board be limited to parents and adult students over the age of 18. We recommend that the appealable issues be limited to three. One, that the local district does not have a policy. Two, that the local district has a policy, but the district did not follow the policy. And lastly, that the local district has a policy, we're following the policy, but that the policy doesn't comply with the regulation. Third, CAC recommends that the timeline for an appeal should begin with a parent receipt of written findings of fact from the local school board, as required by the ESI regulations, local dispute process. Fourth, we recommend that deference be given to the actions and rulings of the local school board. Fifth, we recommend that during the appeal, in making the decision, that additional analysis be permitted, but new evidence and information not be considered from either party. Sixth, CAC recommends that any corrective action ordered to the local Board of Education comply with the KSDE technical assistance. Seventh, if corrective action is ordered to a local Board of Education, CAC recommends that the documentation of appropriate training be provided to KSDE within a prescribed number of days. If corrective action is ordered to a local Board of Education, CAC recommends that the documentation of changed policy, if appropriate, be provided to KSDE within a prescribed number of days. Ninth, CAC recommends that any appeal decision made by a KSDE hearing officer be published and distributed to the local Board of Education. And finally, CAC recommends that a KSDE hearing officer may return a complaint to the local Board of Education with instruction about how to resolve it. We appreciate your time and your consideration of this issue. Thank you very much.
And to piggyback on what Dr. Robbins just recapped for you from the CAC meeting, we're now going into some proposed language that was made available to you in your materials. And CAC not only discussed the need and what an appeal process would look like for the Emergency Safety Intervention Regulations, but also a definition of the word "parent." So on the first slide, you can see that there's two regulations or pieces of the regulations that are listed there, and that's the reason why. It was a secondary issue, but one that CAC felt was important, and we'll go through that going forward. Did I hit the wrong line? So in drafting of these, and the effort in drafting these regulations was led by our General Counsel, Scott Gordon, with input from myself and Laura, in terms of making sure that it was capturing what we had heard, not only from you in the past couple of months, but also from these groups, the Special Education Advisory Council, the Disability Rights Center, the Kansas Association of Special Education Administrators, and the Kansas Association of School Boards, and trying to pull together all the different perspectives and thoughts and ideas in order to try to encapsulate as much as we could that simple, concise, declarative appeals process, but also sticking to what we believe would pass through the Office of Administration and review by the Attorney General going forward. So the overall goals of an appeal process, and looking here, I'm going to just kind of include the word "parent," because when we look through who believes should have standing in order to bring an appeal, that is limited to a parent or eligible student. And so we knew that there had to be some clarification of who that person would be. But the overall goals of this appeal process is that it has to be accessible to students and to parents. And a large piece of that, it will be through the technical assistance, guidance document, and work that we do as a team here in order to get those words out, and working with the districts across the state in order to make sure that it's understood, and then working with our parent centers, Families Together, KPERC, in order to get information out in family-friendly, accessible ways. The second is that the administrative review process must encourage resolution at the local level. That was something that we heard from you all here last month, and that was something that was also echoed by CAC. Because, you know, we bring these visuals, which we like a lot, and I know they may be blocking some things, but, you know, all of this starts here, at the very bottom in this orange, with the local Board of Education's decision. There's a complaint process within the ESI regulations, and then a local board makes written findings of fact and gives those back to the parents and a copy to us, and that's really where this appeals process goes. So our third point here is that the process of administrative review must respect the authority of the local Board of Education's decision. So on this one, you can see, this is just a highlight here, when we began talking about 9142-4, we're really starting from the local Board of Education decision, which triggers this administrative review. And administrative review is substituting for appeals process and through this discussion, but that is what I'm talking about when I talk about administrative review. And I'm going to turn it over to Laura Jurgensen, one of our attorneys on the ESAT's team, to walk through the next couple of slides on provisions and pieces of the regulations.
So I want to talk to you first about KAR 91-42-1, and you can find this in page 39 of your board materials. And this is the definition section for the ESI regulations. And it was very important to CAC to define what is meant by "parent" and what is meant by "eligible student." You can see the definition of "parent" here on your screen. They wanted something that would be easy for districts to apply when determining who the parent is, because of course, under the ESI regulations, they have to notify the parent in writing within two school days of an incident of ESI. And then this also defines who can bring a complaint to the local Board of Education, and then who can bring a review to KSDE of that decision. So when a district is attempting to determine who the parent is, they would start with number one. If they have a natural parent, that's who you go with. If you don't have a natural parent, you move on to number two, you look for an adoptive parent, and so forth. Number three, you'll see is a person acting as a parent. And it directs you to another statute. That statute is the one on school residents. And in that statute, it defines who a person acting as a parent is. And we went with that definition because we thought it was clear for districts to apply, because districts are going to be trying to figure out, okay, who is the parent? Who do I need to notify? And so we wanted something very easy for them to apply, so that's why we directed them there. And so then you would move on throughout the statute, or throughout the definition. Eligible student, of course, would be a student who has reached the age of 18. So now let's turn over to page 41 of your board materials, and let's walk through the administrative review process that was drafted by our General Counsel with assistance from Jana and I. So we're going to talk first about subsection A. And subsection A makes it very clear who may request a review. And like we've talked about, it would be a parent or an eligible student. Now, this is in line with what's in the ESI regulations. So you see in the flow chart that a parent can go to their local board and make a complaint under the regulations. And so then, it would be the same person requesting a review of the local board's decision. It also makes it very clear here that you have to go first to the local dispute resolution process. So you have to start with what's already existing in the regulations. You would go to your local board first. If the parent disagreed with that decision, they could then come to the state board, the state department. You'll see those terms used later about who will actually do this review. And so what this review is setting up is the state board is ensuring here that local boards are complying with the ESI regulations by allowing the parent or eligible student to bring this request for an administrative review. So let's look at what a parent can put in their request for administrative review. And so in subsection B on page 41, and then continuing over to page 42, you will see all of the things that the parent can request review on. And we laid it out that way intentionally so that the parent can just look right to here and see what they can allege. We want to make it very clear about, okay, so here's the actions that if the school took, you can ask for a review. took, you can ask for a review on. And so, I realize that it is a lengthy list, but we did that to be as clear to the parent as possible, what we were talking about. And so, this, this list of things was designed with both the parent and the local board in mind. So, in this, you know, first subsection where it talks about parents using individual, specific instances, what they're, what the parent is saying here is, this is what happened to my kid, and this is how it violated the local board's policy. And we give them the instances in which this would violate the local board's policy. And then that second part is where the local board has the, the opportunity to show that through the local dispute resolution process, we realized that we had some problems, and we fixed them. So, let's look now at subsection C, which will be over on page 42. And so, this just lays out what needs to be in each request. We took language from other regulations that we have, where people are allowed to bring complaints to the department. We tried to make this very simple. If this should pass, we will create a form that a parent can use. We won't expect them to just look to here and, you know, try to figure out all these things. We will come up with a very clear form if this is the direction that you all decide to go. The goal here is to make sure that the hearing officer has everything they need to make the decision upfront. So, that's why we attempted to be very thorough with what we're asking for when someone requests an administrative review. Let's look at subsection D, and that's going to start at the bottom of page 42. So, here, the request for administrative review has to come to the commissioner. And it has to come to the commissioner within 15 days of the parent receiving the result from the local board, or 45 days after the parent files their complaint with the local board, whichever happens first. Now, we did this because in the ESI regulations, if a parent files a complaint with the local board, that local board has 30 days to take action. And so, we are giving the opportunity for the local board to take action on the complaint that the parent has brought to them. But we wanted to also cover the parent in the event the local board did not act within the 30 days that they're required to. And so, that's why we have 15 days within, after the parent gets the decision from the local board, or 45 days from whatever the parent went to the local board. So, they're covered either way. Whether their local board makes a decision in a timely manner or not, they can still come to us. This is the same process that is used for other hearings that come to our agency. That's where we took this language. We point out here that it comes from the Hearing Officer statute, which is KSA 72-75-19. And that statute lays out what has to happen when our agency receives an appeal, a case, you know, a, a matter that needs to be heard by a hearing officer in our department. And so, that's why we use this specific language as we're required to by that statute. So, what will happen is, is when the commissioner gets this request for administrative review, it will go to a KSDE staff member who has been designated as a hearing officer. And so, before the hearing officer starts, they will give a copy of the request for administrative review to the clerk of the local board, from where the local decision came from, so that they are aware that their decision has been appealed to the state board. Let's look at subsection E, which is on page 43. Once the hearing officer gets this request for administrative review, the hearing officer will begin by reviewing what happened at the local level. Hopefully, that hearing officer has the findings of fact from the local Board of Education. They'll review whatever the result was from the lower level. The, the hearing officer can then initiate an investigation, and the investigation can include these three things. Discussing with the parent or the student, gathering additional information if needed, making contact with that local board, and giving that local board an opportunity to respond in writing to this request, and then an onsite investigation if needed. Now, this section was drafted in a way to capture CAC's recommendation that deference be given to the local board decision. And so, the, the investigation will be, the scope of the investigation will be determined by the hearing officer after reviewing what happened at the local level. Let's look at subsection F, which goes into this further. Now, what we, what I think we've mentioned previously is that our intent is for the hearing officer to have everything they need to make the decision upfront. But if they don't, they can, of course, go through the investigation that we talked about on the previous slide. No new information can come to the hearing officer. And we did this because it was important to CAC that the local board be allowed to act on this issue. So, if there is new information, the local board needs the opportunity to act on that new information. So, what would happen in the event the parent brought a request for administrative review and said, hey, I have all these new facts that I want to bring out, what the hearing officer would do is send that back to the local board and instruct the local board to redo its investigation in light of this new information. And so, it's giving the local board a shot at making the decision with all of the information that it needs. And so, of course, if a parent has new facts, they can bring them out, but the hearing officer would then send that back to the local level to give that, that local board a shot to decide it. And then, of course, if the parent was not satisfied with the outcome, they could then bring it to KSDE. So, the hearing officer, once the investigation is completed, will decide whether the school district violated the ESI regulations based on the information that it has. And so, here, the hearing officer has discretion whether to allow the parent or the district to refine things that happened at the lower level. If it all gets to be too new, and the local board hasn't had an opportunity to act on that, then the hearing officer would send that back down. So, Jana's going to walk you through what happens next.
Thank you, Laura. So, the piece I'm going to cover at the end of this is, is what happens after the hearing officer makes the determination, makes, that makes findings from their administrative review. And you can see there, listed is a long list of people that will receive a copy of the written findings of facts, conclusions, and corrective actions if necessary, and deemed so appropriate by the hearing officer. And includes a parent, eligible student, the local Board of Education, and you, and including also the superintendent of the schools. But will receive a copy of those written findings of fact, the corrective actions if necessary, and just what went through in the reviews. It is a 60-day timeline, but it can take less time. 60 days is given as a maximum, but it is given as a maximum only to make sure that we will be able to provide you with an update on our administrative review sometime during those 60 days. And it also provides the hearing officers some time if they need to do those onsite investigations, if something else comes up, if they're looking at the written findings of fact from the local Board of Education and need to go onsite, it gives also time for that review or investigation to occur. Section H is what the hearing officer will determine. And, and there are three points here. It's either the local board appropriately resolved it, the local board should reevaluate the complaint, or the local board should comply with the hearing officer's corrective action to ensure the local board's policies comply with KAR 9142-2. And this is really where we get to this part, and I think why Dr. Robbins talked about CAC working through this really thoughtfully and with a lot of attention, and, and probably why we've had so many discussions here, too, is right here is where we get to kind of some uncharted territory of how we have, how this goes, and, and looking at a review of a local Board of Education's decision. And so, because this is some individual disputes between a parent disagreement with the local Board of Education, and this is a subsequent review process, here is what we have outlined as possible determinations, and where the hearing officer, as an agent of KSDE, could go in and, and ask for corrective action to be taken, to make sure that what the local board is doing, what the local district is doing, matches what is required by the state Board of Education's regulations on the use of emergency safety interventions. I talks about potential corrective actions that can be, can be had. And this mirrors a lot of what we see in other places where corrective action is mandated by the department on behalf of the board. And that includes documentation of the completed corrective actions. There is a possibility for a written request for an extension of time by the local if they're unable to do so. And, and of course, that then is up to the discretion of the hearing officer, whether or not they will grant that extension of time. Part three here, I, I think is important and worth mentioning, too, that if, we have not had this happen in other instances where we have issued any type of corrective action to the local, local school boards or local districts, but if a local board failed to initiate corrective action, we would bring that back to you for further discussion and consideration at a meeting, to determine what actions, if anything, would need to be taken next. So, we believe in drafting it in this way, it allows flexibility to address each situation appropriately within local context, because there are, as Laura pointed out, you know, several different issues that could arise under the ESI regulations. So, the corrective action needed to be drafted broad enough to, to encompass all of those possible violations, and allow for remedy through technical assistance and work with the districts to occur.
Jana, we have a couple of questions before you proceed. Ken Willard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My first question was a while back, and it had to do with CAC's presentation, and they talked about having, brought all the stakeholders in. I wanted, I'd like to know who the stakeholders are, if there were or were not parents, non-CAC-connected parents who've had complaints. Were they part of the stake, one of the stakeholders that was heard or not?
I, I can begin to answer that, and I will let Joan answer that as well. You know, CAC is, is, is required under special education law. And so, the membership is dictated, but a lot of those folks that serve in different capacities on CAC are parents.
I understand that, but I'm talking about non-CAC member parents who have had complaints.
I, specific parents did not show to provide testimony at CAC themselves, but through different public comment, folks that came forth on public comment, many of whom you heard here, they did bring testimonies forth from parents. And Families Together sits on CAC as a non-voting member, and they were able to provide context about the complaints that they had received, or concerns that they had received, and how those had been resolved. So, while specific parents, although always welcome to provide public comment, did not come to CAC, the last meeting, they have in the past, and I should say they did two, one did attend the meeting in Wichita in July. The past meeting, there were none, but written testimony was provided from some parents to CAC.
Were, were parents notified, parents of, of disabled children notified of, of the hearing and asked to bring testimony, or how, how were they notified?
And I think that's a great question. And all CAC meetings are, are public meetings, and the notification of their meetings is available on our website. But CAC intentionally took that break, and Joan, please, if I, if I get this wrong, I don't want to over paraphrase what CAC did, but having a special meeting and then taking the time to come back in September, that was done intentionally, so that the CAC members could talk to folks in their community and gather insight to bring back to CAC to have a more rounded conversation, because those are issues in different, folks from different places, including, you know, a lot of people on CAC are parents of, of children with disabilities, able to talk to different groups in their communities and come back and have a balanced conversation at CAC.
The second question I had, and you may have addressed this, and I just missed it, but how long does a parent have to file a complaint with the local board?
That varies. The regulations are, are not prescriptive on that manner. So, what it, what it, there's no statute of limitations.
There's no statute.
And, and within the statute itself, with, I should say, within the regulations, there's no prescribed timeframe. Districts do vary on how long they say a complaint needs to be filed with the local Board of Education if they, if a parent believes that, indeed, in fact, a violation did occur, but that varies from district to district. That is up to local policy.
Okay, so, every, every local district's policy on that could be different?
It could be. Many are the same, because they work with one of the organizations to, to model some draft sample policies, but it could be.
So, what happens if, often, there's poor communication, even between parents and kids, and for various reasons, having to do with a disability maybe? What happens if the parent discovers a problem after the statute of limitations outlined by the school's local policy?
Well, I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any particular examples, but, but we do, you know, recognize in some instances that, you know, that could definitely be a reality. There are other avenues that could always be taken and highlighted in green. I hope I'm pointing to the right place on here, that are, that are always available to parents. And, and those have different timeframes and time limits within those, too, but those remain throughout. You know, in terms of changing the timelines, I, I think, you know, we always try to encourage parents or other advocacy groups that bring that to our attention to really speak with the local boards in terms of getting some flexibility with that. But, again, you know, that is absolutely, you know, a concern, and that's really on our end, too, to help districts be able to communicate to parents about not only their policies on ESI, but also those timeframes that are within the district policies on the use of ESI.
You've made a point two or three times that deference should be given to the local school board in the administrative review decision. What does that mean?
It, it's just taking into consideration of what the, the local board within the complaint piece here in the ESI regulations has, has done an investigation and has made written findings of fact. So, the hearing officer during the administrative review will take that on its face as true, but then will look at the other information brought forth by the parents, and, and in conversations with the local board, and determining whether or not that decision was wrong, that decided that the local board was following its policy, but implemented its policy incorrectly, making those decisions based on those three kind of appealable pieces within it. But that ultimately, you start from a place that the local board's decision was correct, and you're looking for things that would say that that, indeed, in fact, was an incorrect decision.
Based on the local district's published policy?
Public policy and the written findings of fact. Because this, this begins when the, the local board has already conducted an investigation and made written findings of fact, so that would be what would come to the review officer, the hearing officer, would be those written findings of fact, along with the parent complaint for appeal.
Is there any room for a parent to make, to file for an appeal just because they disagree with the local board's policy, or, or the decision, not just because they didn't follow the policy as written? They just have, they disagree?
Yes, and, and looking under B, you know, there's a list of allegations, and we were working really, I, I don't think it's on the slide, so I apologize, I think it's on page 41 of your board packet, that, that lists nine different ways that appeal can be brought, and, and they do, they vary. And, but they can go down to individual instances, notification didn't happen. So, there's, we, we tried hard to think of a way that a parent would not be able to, would have a hard time bringing an appealable issue, and we were unable to do so. We think that those nine areas listed would allow for a parent to bring an appealable issue to, to the state board or to KSDE.
Okay, I'm not intending to monopolize this, but just one more- Okay, I'm not intending to monopolize this, but just one more question. On the screen that you have up there now, "The officer shall determine whether the local board appropriately resolved the complaint pursuant to their local dispute resolution process." And here's the thing that's bothering me about this and the reason for my line of questioning. If there's not a standardized dispute resolution process at the local school level, then doesn't that open the door for inconsistency across the board? So that, I mean, the hearing officer is first going to have to understand what the local school board's resolution process is to determine whether or not it was actually followed. And if every school board has a different resolution process, is there not a potential for problems? And even lawsuits, because kids are not being dealt with equitably across the board?
The pieces of that the local boards have choice on is with timeframes and those kinds of things. But within this, and if I can kind of come over here, all of these pieces here are what's required by the ESI regulations. And so for these things, there is no choice. Now, I said here, you know, that it can be a shorter timeframe to be able to file a complaint, but how the local board will have some difference on how they may exactly conduct their investigation, but they have to conduct an investigation and they have to make written findings a fact. Now, there is some leeway, but I think we would run into maybe some of the same considerations here with how broad some of these pieces are about being able to appropriately address kind of the myriad of things that may arise under the ESI regulations if that got too prescriptive. But again, that would be a consideration by you all, whether or not that that would be another piece to reopen. But there are some prescriptions on what that local dispute resolution piece must look like, but there is some flexibility within that for local boards to conduct their investigation.
Do you think that the requirement that the parent, that the written complaint be typed, is a bit restrictive?
I think that is completely up for conversation. In special education, when a complaint comes in, sometimes those are handwritten as well. So, you know, that is a piece that's in there, but I think that that's open for discussion and for your consideration. And none of this is set in stone, and this was a good first draft by us, but we're absolutely open to questions, comments, and considerations on those pieces.
Thank you.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a question as of this time. I'll just say that I'm rather disappointed in your effort.
Jim McNeese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This might be a question for our board attorney.
Are you listening?
There's a statement up here that says, "A state board generally does not get involved in every individual dispute between students and parents at the local board level. Under what occasions and what reasons do we get involved?"
I would say that the state board rarely gets involved with student issues at the local level and for reasons of local control and the constitutional limitations on this board's authority. I'd say it's pretty rare. I can't give you a specific example. I'd have to give that a little bit more thought, and we could certainly talk about that in executive session as to the issues related to this board, the legal limitations on this board's ability to enforce. I will say, though, that in conversations with Scott Gordon, who happens to be listening to the presentation, he's at a conference but was obviously wanting to hear the feedback, and he let me know that he's available if there are any specific questions. I know that there is a -- certainly is an effort to balance the board's desire to have some oversight and review with the inherent limitations that this board has on its ability to go beyond what the courts have said about supervision and control related to local boards, so that's -- there is a balance in act that goes on. The other thing I'd just point out is that this is a -- it's a review procedure but doesn't necessarily provide a, what we call, a private right of action, meaning the ability to, you know, to bring a lawsuit against the board. At least, that's the stated intent of the administrative regulation, is that in lawyers' terms, you know, you can -- there's a review process, but there's not the ability to name the State Board of Education as a defendant for failure to comply with those regulations.
And my question is, where does the language in that bullet point originate?
These were some comments put in by Scott Gordon to provide some support for that.
Okay, I just didn't know if that was lifted out of some document somewhere or is just a general understood understanding of our responsibilities. Okay.
In response to your question, Madam Chair, the first bullet point is specifically from Kansas Supreme Court case law that discusses the fact that the state board provides supervision but doesn't provide control, so doesn't control local board. So that's the parameter on that. And I don't know what the specific citation was related to the second bullet point, other than just a general, more general principle and recognition that the agency perhaps follows related to the general concept of local control.
And Brad has a comment.
When knowing Scott wasn't going to be here today because he's at a conference, even though he's listening in, when Scott and I went through to try to do the PowerPoint to explain the reasoning for specific language, we started putting some of these blue, you know, just as talking points to say, yeah, we could never come up with an example of where the state board ever did get involved. So the blue bullets are just talking points to try to explain why the language is in there.
Thank you.
Is this a -- oh, I'm sorry. So this is a new precedent for us to take this kind of action?
We couldn't think of an example that in past history that the state board has ever overturned a local board's decision on a student issue. So that's why we were just trying to explain that this recommendation doesn't do that. What it does is to say, "We don't believe you followed your policy," or, you know, those three things, but it's not saying that you need to do this. So that -- it would be setting new precedents, yes, because we couldn't think of a time this board had ever done that.
Thank you.
Kathy Bush.
I do have some questions, but have you finished?
I have one more slide.
Okay, well, I'd like for you to do that slide, and then I'll ask my questions, if that's okay.
Absolutely, that'd be great. And so this is just the last slide here, and it just says, "This regulation only creates procedural rights, imposes only procedural duties, and these are only in addition to those created and imposed by other statutes. So this does not substitute or interfere with any other remedy available by law." And so bringing back here, too, these always exist. You know, and talking about those pieces, too, this doesn't interfere with any of these remedies that exist here in the green.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I have a couple of questions. Several times in here, it refers to days, D-A-Y-S. Are those school days or calendar days?
We would say they are calendar days.
Okay, well, I don't know if that needs to be clarified in this or not, because that would make quite a difference. I mean, I would assume they were calendar days, but, you know, sometimes that's difficult to assume something.
Thank you. Yeah, generally, if it's not indicated as school days, it will be considered calendar days, but we can definitely, you know, work on that as well to clear that up.
I still wonder if we have clarity on the definition, it's a phrase, it's not a term, on what is meant by immediate danger to self and others. Is that clear to our districts? I don't know if that is or not. I guess that would be something I'd want a little bit more feedback on. And I certainly, before I vote, want to review some of the materials that we got today. And that being said, and Jim kind of alluded to this, but I'd kind of like an opinion either from our attorney or the department's attorney on the constitutionality of the state board having some of -- because some of these things, I don't know if it's within our constitutional purview or not. So I'd kind of like an opinion either from Mark or from Scott of where that lands. So those are kind of my issues I kind of want to, for myself, have a little more clarity on. So, and I don't know that you can give those to me today, but that's something that I would like some additional information on.
I can give a little bit of information about how the immediate danger of harming him or herself or others came to be. That really stemmed from, and there was a lot of discussion when the regulations were coming through that first time, about, you know, how would districts or how do school personnel, how would they know when? And those are the commonly used definitions by some of the larger training folks out there that are recognized as sort of the experts in the use of restraint and seclusion, and that they say it is when a student is in immediate danger of harming him or herself. So it kind of sprung from there as a common definition that was already being used in schools when they were recognizing a crisis happening, and that was really kind of the impetus in focusing on that as a recognizable standard for most of our districts.
So do you feel like districts understand that terminology?
It would be hard for me to. I don't know if I can speak for all districts, but I do know if they engage with CPI or MANT or some of those other bigger training companies, that that is what is being trained on as kind of the standard to use before restraint or seclusion is used.
I'd just like to add something, if I could. This is just anecdotally. I obviously get lots of questions on these regulations, and when the regulations first came out, I got lots of questions around what does this mean, probably within the first month or two. I have not gotten any questions on it since that time. So if that's at all helpful.
Okay, so you felt maybe some of that's gotten some clarity to the districts?
It is our hope that through the trainings we provided across the state and the guidance we provide on the TAZN website, that those issues have been resolved.
As far as that phrase of the danger.
Right, and so of course, like Shanna said, I can't speak for all districts. I can't guarantee that that's true, but just anecdotally, I'm not getting questions on that anymore.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, Shanna Wa.
Thank you, Madam -- thank you, Madam Chair. I've struggled with this the entire time we've been discussing this. I cannot remember one instance since I've been on the board that we have had an appeal from a local board decision to this board that we have discussed and agreed with or disagreed with. I do not recall ever doing that. Having served as a local board member, I do remember several times we had to make decisions, particularly specifically on suspensions, and there was no appeal process on that. So I guess my concern, and I guess I appreciate what you asked, Kathy, of our attorney, to get a report on that, on local concern. My biggest concern, and that's why I'm so happy we're not voting on this today, because I need to really debate this within my own self and maybe get some more input from my districts, is are we opening Pandora's box? Because if we start an appeal process on this, well, we then start an appeal process on other issues that may go before the local board. Because once you do something like this where we are establishing a precedence, and so I guess right now, that's my concern. I'm not arguing with what you recommended. I think you've worked hard, and I certainly appreciate all the efforts. But those are my concerns, because I do understand parents' concerns on disagreeing with the decision, but I believe they currently do have some other rights to continue on with an appeal. But like I say, I just need -- I need more time, but thank you so much for what you've done.
Thank you.
Deana Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, too, have some concerns about our being involved in an appeals process directly But assuming that we may go ahead and put ourselves in that arena and the administrative review, I have some questions about why "may" is used instead of "shall." Is that related to the constitutionality question? Or is it just leaving it up to the hearing officer to make a decision whether they're going to investigate or not?
I think the intention, and looking through this, was to be, you know, "may" or "is" is more permissive than "shall." So giving a little bit more deference to the hearing officer to be able to do what he or she would deem appropriate.
And there are three things limited or listed there. Is it limited to those three? Or could it include things that are not listed?
Under H, is this what?
It's under E.
Under E.
Under the administrative review E. And it just says, "Each investigation may include the following," and there are three things listed. So I'm, you know, you've got them up there.
You know, I think probably, while one and two speak to, you know, either a conversation or meeting or, you know, information gathering from the parents, and, you know, two speaks to the local board or other school staff, the number three, if that was a team determined appropriate by the hearing officer to do, I think that that is left open enough that the department's staff could do whatever they deemed appropriate in order to bring enough information to the table for the hearing officer to make a decision.
So those three things would, that's the limit? They couldn't come up with another idea?
Right now, that was the best thoughts on that. I, you know, open to suggestions if I could come up with another one that may be appropriate. Hopefully, three was left broad enough that there could be, it could touch on a lot of things, maybe unanticipated at this point in time, but open to suggestions if there would be another piece that would be needed.
Well, and perhaps that's a legal manner of handling things, and it's understood. But as kind of a layperson, when you say "may include," that kind of tells me it could include other things as well. So I'm just asking whether there's a limitation or whether it allows a broader spectrum.
I think this defines the broader end of the spectrum. You know, these three define the broader end, and then it could be anything less than that. So this is, you know, all of those, "may include the following," that's the broad end of it, and then the investigation may be much more narrow.
So the intent is really to limit it to those three statements?
In the broadest sense, and then the investigator can work within those parameters back down to whatever would be appropriate for that individual situation.
And then there seemed to be, if I recall, some earlier comments, there was a concern about whether the parent would have to repeat the filing if they about whether the parent would have to repeat the filing if they do find some other, bring some new information, and you send it back to the board for review and for investigation. So would the parent have to refile? Or is it a, is it just a part, a step that steps it back and then it can be brought back to the hearing officer? What, what is the intent?
If it got remanded back to the local board, then the local board would pick up right there with whatever issue has been sent back down to it for investigation. If it was parent bringing new, new evidence, an allegation that was previously unheard in there, and then the, the hearing officer could send that back to the local board, and then the local board would initiate the investigation and work through this process, and that they would issue written findings of fact. Now, at that point in time, if the parent disagreed with it, they would have to come back up to file a new appeal on that issue, administrative review on that issue. But it would be decided initially by the local board of education.
It would, they'd file the appeal on the new information?
Correct. After the local board had made a decision on it.
Okay.
And if they disagreed with that, and they wanted a review of that, then they could proceed back through that.
Because I'm not sure that's real clear.
Sure.
So that may be, that may need to be clarified. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ken Willard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know it's lunchtime, and I'm going to be brief, but I'm, I'm respectful and appreciative of the efforts to come to bring some sort of language that we can agree on. But I think that we need to consider that getting language that will work and get six votes and pass constitutional muster without overly stretching our constitutional powers and our self-executing powers may be more than, than we have the muscle to do. And it may be that this needs to be just allowed to go to the legislature to handle, to, to, they, they could change the whole, the whole environment if they chose to do so. But I'm, I'm thinking that, I've, I've always been reluctant to, to interject, or to have individual issues brought to the local, the state board of education. I think that could just get totally unwieldy. At the same time, I'm a parent of some disabled children, and so I understand the frustration of not being able to get questions answered sometimes. So I think that, I'm not saying that we're there yet, but in order for us to get anything out that is going to satisfy most people, it may be just difficult, too difficult for us to accomplish. And I hate to admit defeat, but that may be, that may be the case, in which case, then I think we would just effectively be remanding it to the legislature to address.
Brad would like to make a comment.
I appreciate Ken's words, and CAC, this is very challenging, because you, you know, you can hear all the different opinions. So what, what they wanted to do is say, from everything we've heard from outside, from the board, this is the start, this is a receive item, and now that they can hear your thoughts, then we can bring it back as another discussion item and really kind of hone in after you have time to look at extra information. But they really wanted to bring, they, they knew the importance to the board was you wanted a recommendation. And from listening to your input from the last few months, from what they're hearing from their parents, their constituents, this is the best start that they, that they think can kind of meet some of the things that Ken had talked about, and, and maybe allow the conversation to move further at the direction of the board. So.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Well, this is an important issue, and as we've all said, we've received so much information today. I think we all want time to reflect on it and read it and search our minds about where we're going with this. So thank you for all your effort.
That's right.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you.
What are you doing after lunch, Matt?
I, I can go before or after lunch, I have a meeting or two, but I can, I can do it to you too. I can also take my 15 minutes and do it in three.
Okay. We'll go for that.
I can do that.
My goal is to be out of here by at least 12:30.
Assuming that I don't have lots of comments to reply. I can do my part in three minutes or less.
Okay.
Any moments to start a stopwatch, you let me know. Just tell me when to start.
He has a three-minute setting on his.
Okay. You got me? Are you ready, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay. Here we go. Here's the update on what we're doing with implementation. As you know, it's a consuming effort that involves a lot of different stakeholders at a lot of different levels. A couple of pieces just to highlight from the recent time, from the last update. We've been, we had a, a day with curriculum leaders. It was different than we've traditionally done with curriculum leaders. The math and science folks did, instead of having an update throughout the year, in September, we had a meeting where we actually provided a half-day of professional learning for those curriculum leaders. Half of it was on math and half of it was on science, to give them tools and equip them to go back to their districts and, and help support the efforts that they're making. So that's one of the pieces that we've done. Kent Association for Teachers of Science had a mini-conference just this last weekend, and I helped, helped them work with that and did sort of the keynote for that, and did a virtual keynote in all the regional locations across the state, which I also did last year. Our state departments, our, our, our science education faculty are starting to reach out to their content area faculty. So I had the privilege of sitting in with the physics department at K-State this last week, and we talked about the standards, and, and they, at least in, in concept, agreed that in their, in their content area courses, in the classes, that teachers who teach physics will be in, in those physics courses, they're gonna, they're going to try to do at least one of the, one of their periods of lecture, or one of their lessons, they're going to deliberately target standards from, from the K-12 piece, and say that they're doing that, so that teachers can experience sort of some of the teaching strategies that we hope they're going to engage in, in the classroom, in their actual content area classrooms as well. Just a recent highlight that I, I went out and I worked with Valley Center School District, and they're really engaging hard, and I talked with them last year, and they, they're working on things this year. They're, they've got a K-12 leadership team that they're putting together, and they're having elementary, middle, and high school. And I had one teacher in particular who said that she had had project-based learning in particular, and her own experiences in high school as a younger teacher. She was at the downtown law public and social service minute, magnet in Wichita, and said it changed her life. And she saw that in these standards, and she was really excited to implement them in the classroom. I'm done. Any questions or comments?
Are there questions for Matt?
Was that your math and science training that allowed you to do that excellent presentation?
Sure.
Well, we know it's an ongoing effort. It's challenging, and we appreciate your leadership in making this happen. So thanks.
One brief request, and I'll, I'll do this in less than 30 seconds that I had left, would be, one of the groups that we're, we're figuring out different ways to engage, that it's slower, because it's not a, a group that we traditionally engage from science, is, is business and industry, and, and science and engineering in your districts. So if any of you have contacts or connections in your districts that you think would be good for us to connect in with, and you have personal information, if you could get that, actually, I didn't tell Denise I was going to do that, but I've been working with Denise a lot about how we communicate with those folks. If you could get that information to Denise, that would be really helpful in our efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we will break for lunch and be back at 1:30. Thank you.